My horse stepped away like two hours before. Nothing, but he just like stumbled on it. Like he stumbled on something, he just saw it, just slammed it. And then he wouldn't get off because he's like looking at the edge of anything and I'm like shoving him off. He's like, oh, you're there.
This is exciting.
It's just like, what am I, a bodyguard?
I know.
Oh, hey.
Twenty years.
Oh, jumped off.
Yes. I can't believe it.
Called a crush.
We love the same.
We already smashed this, like I haven't been like down to this one that was years ago. It's never been this serious. I've never taken one. Thank God. It could have been like another. Definitely it's for having her. She's funny.
Sure.
Get your ears out.
Should I try to get his ears?
You have that type of phone like you can erase things. Photoshop.
Be sure you cut it.
Yeah.
Welcome everyone to the San Marcos City Council meeting for May 12th. We have some special guests here today. We have some students from Santa Lejo Elementary. We have Oliver Rayner, Thomas Lackness, Beckett Cook, James Berita, and Colin McCauley. So if you gentlemen would like to come up for the Pledge of Allegiance. Oh, we have a roll call first, but I'm calling this meeting to order, sorry. Come on up. And if you could please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we have an invocation. God, we ask your blessings on those who have been called to lead the community in which we live, play, and work. Guide us peacefully through debate. Remind us that we're not only leaders, but first servants. And that it is our responsibility to serve the common good of all. Grant us the wisdom and courage to know what to do and what is good, right? And may we speak out when time to speak and listen patiently and receptively when it is time to listen. May we always be guided by the spirit of community, by the spirit of justice, and by the spirit of love. Amen. Okay, could we have a roll call, Mr. Scalick?
Yeah. Councilmember LeBlanc.
Present.
Councilmember Musgrove.
Here.
Councilmember Nunez.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Sennella.
Here.
And Mayor Jones.
Here. Okay, we're going, we have a few presentations this evening. We're going to go a little bit out of order. First up, we have Twin Oaks Valley Equestrian Association. They're having their anniversary this year, 20 years. I believe we have, so that's going to be the first one. And then we have the Smile Award. After that, we will have the Economic Development Week Proclamation, National Public Works Week Proclamation, and then Bike Anywhere. So just to let everyone know if you're kind of going, well, we're not in order. Oh, look, we have a guest this evening. Okay, so first up is going to be Patty Morton, the president of Tovia. And if you could please, Michael Taylor will have a PowerPoint presentation. And is this Bunny? Bunny is here to visit. Thank you. That's awesome. All right, Michael, you have a presentation for us?
Yes, I do. Mayor Jones and fellow council members, thank you for the opportunity to address you tonight and to talk to you about the Twin Oaks Valley Equestrian Association. As you just mentioned, Ms. Patty Morton is the president of the association, which has been in existence for about 20 years. I'm going to go through a quick presentation, if I can find the clicker, just to kind of tell you about the association. So this was a picture taken, I think, three years ago, and you were front and center, Mayor Jones.
I was.
This was a dedication at the Walnut Grove Park, the equestrian facility. Twin Oaks Valley Equestrian Association has put a lot of money into that facility just to bring it up to speed, if you will, i.e. with additional footing and also with the appropriate signage to go along with the park.
I think this was for the new fencing, too, the new arena fencing that the city purchased. That was great.
So the other thing that's important to know about the association is that we are advocating for the equestrian and rural lifestyle in that part of San Marcos. And it's right, if you're thinking, well, which part of San Marcos is this? This is that intersection between Deer Springs and Twin Oaks Valley Road. A lot of horses in that area, and it's been that way for a number of years. I've lived there for over 25 years and a big horse advocate myself. And so we advocate to ensure that that part of San Marcos stays rural and equestrian in character. So T O V A is the advocacy group, whereas the Horse Heritage Conservancy is the financial arm associated with the association. And as you can see, the H, the Horse Heritage Conservancy is a 501(c)(3), has its IRS designation as a nonprofit. So founding members, T O V A founded in 2005. And yes, Ms. Patty Morton is one of the founding members. Also in the back, Ms. Charlotte Worth is also one of the founding members, as am I. And the current board configuration, Ms. Patty Morton, Ms. Lynn Malonoski, Treasurer, Don Hockey, Lori Hall McNary, also, she is in the back, also one of the founding members, with the star of the show tonight in her presence. Ms. Cat Paloo is here, one of the current board members, and obviously myself. For the Horse Heritage Conservancy, we have, again, Ms. Patty Morton and also Ms. Natalie Hill, one of the board members. So that is the configuration of the board associated with both organizations. So how much money have you raised over the last 20 years? Well, it's $110,000, which I know relatively speaking, and to the size of the city budget, is probably not a lot of money, but a good over 50%, 50% of that money has gone into the park. So we fully understand the importance of fundraising and making sure we put that money back into the community. And there you have just a nice picture of the sign that was put up.
Courtney, our former mounted patrol, city mounted patrol.
And then we also have annual events. We have what's called the Common Ground Clinic, which we do in the spring. We just had that. And then we have, in the fall, we have the Ride and Stride Horse Heritage Festival, essentially celebrating the horse in, within the city of San Marcos. And then we have at any given time, community forums to help people with horses, especially during fire season. How do you evacuate your horse? What's the best place to take your horse in the event of a fire? And we're also big advocates for trails. So again, a picture of the Ride and Stride, and then just the event that we just had. And let me just call out Mr. Lou Roper, who's in the middle there. He's there, the man with the big hat, who is one of our clinicians. And, oh, yes, Fox News was also interested in Walnut Grove Park, and we made sure to be out there. And there you see Ms. Patty on one of her horses. And I think the gentleman's name is Raoul, I can't remember his last name.
That's Raoul.
He's with Fox News. And yeah, very positive event. And there you have Bunny.
Bunny. All right, we're going to come on down. We want to meet Bunny.
That's awesome.
Sarah, you want to come up? No? Lou, you want to come up? Everybody come up. Yeah, come on up. Sandy, Dave?
Where's Ken?
He's here. He's here.
Oh my God.
Oh, yay.
Oh, he's riding that. Or she. She. What a pretty girl.
Okay, did I promise this is going to be a cool council meeting?
So they're very slobbery with apples.
It's okay, we have this. We don't have any carrots.
Destiny went and got the apples from our staff. She's so cute. Anyway, we're really excited to have you here today. And, you know, a part of our heritage is the horse community right out there in Twin Oaks, which I grew up in Ramona and Alcoa, and so for a girl like me, this is very exciting. So Patty, you've been the president of the Twin Oaks Valley Equestrian Association, and you've been a dedicated leader in supporting San Marcos' equestrian community. Under your guidance, Tovia has enhanced local trails, supported the Walnut Grove Equestrian Center, and partnered with the city to promote equestrian education and sustainability. Founded in 2025, the Twin Oaks Valley Equestrian, Tovia Association, is celebrating your 20th year, which is very exciting, and advocating for San Marcos' community of the equestrian. Established by local residents to preserve the area's rural characters, support the growing trail system, and sustain the Walnut Grove Equestrian Center, Tovia continues to make a lasting impact. In partnership with the city of San Marcos and other organizations, Tovia raises funds for trails and facilities, provides equestrian education, and promotes best practices for maintaining multi-use, horse-friendly spaces. Did you want to come on over here? I have, I even have a fancy proclamation for you. I do. So we recognize, I'm going to give you this real quick.
Wow, that's beautiful.
So we want to, I was wondering where my glasses were, I couldn't find them. Anyway, the horses and equestrian activities have been a vital part of our cultural, historical, and recreational life of communities across the United States and are deeply woven into the fabric of our city of San Marcos, enriching the lives of residents and visitors alike. And look at these kids. See, it's the coolest meeting ever. Whereas, the horse stands as a living symbol of our shared history, representing the legacy of exploration, settlement, agriculture, and transportation that shaped the development of both San Marcos and the United States. And the presence of horses in San Marcos has profoundly influenced the community's economy, history, and identity, serving as a cornerstone of local traditions, commerce, and recreational pursuits that continue to thrive even today. Therefore, we, the city of San Marcos, City Council, do hereby proclaim May 13th as the day of the horse in the city of San Marcos and encourage all of our residents and citizens to recognize, appreciate, and celebrate the contributions of horses to our community's past, present, and of course, the future. Can we give them a hand?
Thank you.
It's okay Bunny. Oh Bunny, Bunny doesn't like that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I get a photo up here?
Yes, yes.
Come on, come on up, y'all. She's like, I never get fed. And for anyone. Come on up, Ken.
I know, that's fine.
Who's coming? Michael, Kat, you should get up here, too.
Yeah, shoot, yeah.
All right.
Heck, yeah.
Heck, yeah.
Good to see you.
Bunny has her little, cute little.
She's like a little tiara.
Aww. Sweet Bunny. Well.
What did you guys think?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
She's like, look, it's a whole trough full of food. Thank you so much. Do you want to think few words or? I don't want to.
Thank you all. We really appreciate the support of the city. We've been great partners with the city. All of you have helped us along the way, so we really love our city and our parks and trails. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
It's probably not going to happen a second time, so enjoy. Bunny, thank you for coming.
Thanks, guys. Thank you.
Okay, next up, Councilmember LeBlanc has a Smile Award. Well, I might not have a pony, but I do have a teddy bear, so hopefully that's worth something. So the Smile Award is an award that the council gives five times a year. We each get to choose a recipient. And we choose somebody who we think exemplifies the spirit of service in San Marcos. So I am super excited to give my first Smile Award to Ernie and Jeannie Stratus with Bears for Badges. So I'd love for you guys to come up and join me.
I have a teddy bear, too.
We have lots of teddy bears. So Bears for Badges is an organization that provides teddy bears to first responders for use in their vehicles when they respond to crisis situations with children. And this idea was dreamt up by Jeannie and Ernie about six years ago when they came across a car accident on Christmas Eve. And they thought, wow, I wish I had something that I could give to these kids to provide them some comfort. So Ernie is a retired sheriff's deputy, and so he made some calls. And Jeannie started sewing, and Bears for Badges was born. And they slowly started providing the bears to sheriff stations and then expanded to fire stations. And fast forward six years, they have almost 6,000 bears in fire station, sheriff's stations around San Diego County. So it's really incredible. And in case you're wondering how the bears are made, we have workshops at Palomar West once a month. And I do participate in these workshops, and I have learned firsthand how to make and stuff these bears. So Jeannie actually has a small team. She and her small team sew the bear skins, if you will, ahead of time. And then we get into different stations where we stuff the bears or we sew up the bears. I have not progressed to the sewing station yet, but I do the stuffing. And I will tell you, it's quite the technique. The nose and the ears are the toughest, and then the arms are pretty tough, too. But once you get a hang of it, it's a lot of fun, and there's a great group of women over there who participate in these parties. So thank you so much, you guys, for what you do. And Jeannie, go ahead and give a little bit more of your story, if you'd like.
Well, first of all, I want to thank Danielle. She is a jewel. If you guys have not met her, I suggest that you do. She has the love of this community every day in her heart. And you just see her beaming with it every time she talks about the city. We also do, we moved down here two years ago from Ramona. That's where the bears were born. And since then, I had five ladies helping me up there. Now I have between 20 to 30 ladies that show up. And it's been a real neat experience for me. In fact, some of my ladies are right here. We are now, it's reaching out to another ministry of ours. We're bringing older ladies who don't come out and socialize much anymore. They're actually coming out and having fun and coming back every month and making new friends and getting back into that social life. So that's an area I never thought would happen. But we do this, we provide the CHP, we provide all the, anybody who wants our bears. And they're used for car accidents, for domestic violence, for when the kids are taken away from their parents. We've even had stories where paramedics have been trying to get a blood pressure cuff on a child, and they're screaming and yelling. And they pull out the teddy bear, and all of a sudden, they focus on the bear and they can do their job. We're hearing about it when they have to invest, you know, take the kids in for questioning. The kids can now hold the teddy bear and feel more secure with it. So it's a ministry of mine and my husband's, and we're not a 501(c)(3). We, you know, this is from our heart. We do take donations when we get them, you know, we won't turn them down. But this is basically our way of giving back to you and to your families. And just seeing the smiles on the kids. And I want to thank the San Marcos Fire Department, the Sheriff Department here, have just welcomed us as family, and this whole council has. And it just makes our mission just grow that much more. We hope it continues. I hope to get 12,000 bears out there the next six years. So thank you for letting us do our little presentation, and thank you guys for being in San Marcos.
And I do have a couple official Smile Award certificates for you, and then we'll do a photo with the bears. Bears and ponies, it's the best start to a meeting ever. Thank you guys so much for everything you do.
Thank you.
Come on, Ernie, don't be shy.
No, okay.
Oh, one last thing I was going to show you. Deputy cars, fire trucks, they're all very dirty. So this is how they actually get them. They can throw them in their squad cars.
I'm bringing them back. I'm bringing them back to you, although I might need one today, actually.
Thank you so much. Just squish them. Squish them. Squish them. Thank you so much.
Okay, next up, Economic Development Week. Eric, you're up. I have a long whereas. Yes, Mr. Bruevold. I'm going to read this, and then I'm going to let you say a few words. As long as you're brief and brilliant. I'm just kidding. Anyway, the San Marcos City Council hereby recognizes Economic Development Week. Economic development is a vital component that enhances prosperity and quality of life in the city of San Marcos and communities across the nation and the world. More than 100,000 economic development professionals globally are dedicated to creating, retaining, and expanding high-quality job opportunities that promote long-term equitable community growth. These professionals support vibrant neighborhoods, champion sustainability and resiliency, foster economic prosperity, and contribute to building strong and diversified tax bases. These stewards of economic progress bridge public and private sectors, connecting residents, business leaders, elected officials, industry experts, and educators to support job creation, infrastructure development, and inclusive economic opportunity. The city of San Marcos is committed to fostering and thriving business, fostering a thriving business climate that supports innovation, entrepreneurship, workforce development, and strategic investment. San Marcos is home to a dynamic and diverse economy driven by industries such as advanced manufacturing, education, of course, healthcare, of course, and technology, and bolstered by strong partnerships with institutions like Cal State University, San Marcos, and Palomar College. The International Economic Development Council, since 1926, has led global efforts to advance the profession through a commitment to equity, inclusion, sustainability, and innovation. Economic Development Week, celebrated May 11th through the 17th, provides an opportunity to recognize the significant contributions of economic development professionals and organizations to the continued growth, resilience, and vitality of our San Marcos community. So be it resolved that the city of San Marcos does hereby proclaim, May 11th through the 17th, as Economic Development Week and encourages all of our residents, businesses, and community stakeholders to recognize and support the essential role that economic development plays in shaping a vibrant, inclusive, and prosperous future for all. And I did want to say one other thing, and that is, if you look around and you go to our small businesses, many of them are owned by our neighbors and our friends and our family members. And it's really cool to support those small businesses. So we really want you to get out there and support them as much as you possibly can. We've had so many businesses opening up in the last few weeks, and it's just really cool to see those businesses taking off. So I'll let you say a few words, and there's, you want to, you want to come on this side?
Sure, sure. I used to be on the other side. So thank you, Mayor Jones. Thank you, council. And really, that should be a proclamation that goes to all of you and really to the councils and city managers that came before you. I mean, I look here at San Marcos, and it's really a testament to a forward-looking vision of how to create a prosperous community where there was mostly just agriculture here if we went back 50 years ago. From attracting a Cal State University campus, which fuels really prosperity throughout the region and creates the workforce of tomorrow, to now two major hospitals that will be located across the street from one another, creating really a healthcare hub for North County. And then really forward-looking work in terms of the business park that's over in La Costa Meadows, but then also all the work that you've done with small businesses and entrepreneurs and really emerging communities that really are the future for San Marcos. So I know somebody had to stand up here today because it would have been, I don't know, a little bit faux pas to give yourselves a proclamation. But really, for Economic Development Week, it's really to you that the applause is deserved because of all the work that you've done to make your city great.
And Eric, I didn't mention who you were with. Maybe you want to tell them.
Sure, sure. So I'm the CEO of the San Diego North Economic Development Council. We're the economic development organization that works throughout, throughout North County, everywhere north of 56. And we work to promote the region for inward investment, work with existing businesses, because that's where the lifeblood of our community is, to solve issues for them so they can expand. And then really make sure that educators and employers connect and work together so that we create educational programs that prepare the workforce for tomorrow. So our goal is really to grow jobs and grow prosperity, see people get higher and better wages to make a great North County.
And North County is?
North County is San Diego's upper tier, so it's all. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, I'll give you this.
All right, you get to take a picture.
Where should I be? Right in the middle. Suitable for posting. Absolutely. We're all friends. Absolutely, I just don't. Thank you.
He didn't want to trip and break his leg.
Thanks so much, you did.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. Thank you. Thank you for coming. Okay. Our unsung heroes are our, our Public Works officials. All right, I'm not finding my, oh, here it is. There you are, Darren. I was thinking it was you, but I was trying to verify. All right, so, yes, I am. So Darren's here from Public Works. And, okay, are you, are all of your staff just happy that they don't have to go out in the middle of the night when it rains and go into the creek and put up the barricades so people don't drive into it?
They're very thankful for Isaac and building the bridges.
Yes, yes. So anyway, we're really happy they don't have to do that anymore. But anytime it rains and there's flooding anywhere in the city, they have to do all that work. So we really appreciate them. Anyway, Public Works professionals focus on the infrastructure, facilities, and services that are vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health and high quality of life, the residents and businesses of San Marcos and that they expect. These infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of Public Works professionals who are managers and employees at all levels of government and the private sector. They are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting the nation's in transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential to our residents. It is in the public interest of the citizens, civic leaders, and children of San Marcos to gain knowledge of and to maintain the ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of our Public Works facilities and all of the programs that they handle and take care of. This marks the 65th Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association and the Canadian Public Works Association. Therefore, we, the city council of the city of San Marcos, do proclaim and designate the week, next week, of May 18th through the 24th as National Public Works Week. And all of the residents, we encourage them to join us in activities, events, and ceremonies. And to remember that when it rains and when we have any sort of disaster or there's an accident or anything like that, those folks that are out there doing all of the hard work, making the city look good, is our Public Works Department. So we appreciate all of them very, very much. So did you have a couple of words you'd like to say?
Sure.
Okay.
We just wanted to say thank you to the council and the support of the city and the city manager. We'll be sure to give all the guys some food next week because that's usually the most, the gift that they love the most. And we've done a couple of really cool things this year with bringing street sweeping in-house and ballfield maintenance, and it's been really successful so far. So we couldn't have done that without the support of the council. So we're very appreciative. So thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate it. So to our city manager, Michelle Bender. They like food and we want them to stay nourished so they can do their jobs.
I'm bringing Peterson's Donuts, which is the requested donuts, Monday morning, 6:00 a.m.
All right, okay. Just one more and then we have a presentation. So does anyone know what else is this week? Bike to Work Week. Yes. Well, it's actually Bike to Work Day. But we have some folks from Sandag here with us. And it is Rachel Forsyth. And Rachel is actually going to come and, and, and present or accept this. Well, I think you should both come on. Yeah, yeah, for sure. The Mastermind. Okay, does all the social media, okay. Wait, did you get pictures of the horse? And you've never had, seen a horse at a council meeting, have you?
I have not.
I see, I promised. It would be a fun meeting. Anyway, Bike to Work Day, or Bike Anywhere Day, is the month of May. It's National Bike Month. And May 15th is Bike Anywhere Day in San Diego region. Whereas, there are nearly 1,800 miles of bikeways in the San Diego region, making the San Diego region one of the best places to explore local communities and go by bike to the beach, park, school, work, and/or a local restaurant. Biking is an emission-free and also a healthy transportation alternative for short car trips that reduces traffic congestion. And Sandag is organizing Bike Anywhere Day on May 15th. And by, we will have a pit stop here at City Hall, but they'll talk a little bit about that. And we encourage all students, families, commuters, bike enthusiasts, and people new to biking to replace a car trip with a bike trip and pledge to go by bike to an official pit stop from 6:30 to 9:30 a.m. on Thursday, May 15th. Therefore, we, the city council of the city of San Marcos, do hereby commend and recognize May 2025 as Bike Month and May 15th as Bike Anywhere Day and encourage everyone to go by bike this May and throughout the year. So I will have you come and accept this. Who's doing, who's doing the speaking today? Both of you? It's fine. Here, I'll get through this. All right. You're welcome. Oh, no, no, no. Oh, no. No, now. Well, oh, okay, actually, because you have a whole presentation. So, okay, then how about let's just wait. We want to do that actually a little bit later. We don't, so yeah, let's just come and take a picture real quick and then, yes, we'll let you have that.
Yeah, we're going a little bit off script today. So it's hard not to follow the horse.
I know. Who could?
Thank you all. Thanks for having us. I wish I had brought a bike or something as a prop like that horse. And you covered a lot of what I was going to cover in that wonderful proclamation. So I'm happy to be here on behalf of Sandag. My name's Rachel. I work in the Public Affairs team, a team of many people who have been working hard to make this week possible. So I'm just going to run through a little bit about what to expect during Bike Month and Bike Anywhere Day. We're really excited. It's one of our favorite days of the year. It kind of feels like Christmas Eve right now. For over 30 years, Sandag has hosted a bike event in May. And our goal is really to reduce traffic, reduce pollution, and increase joy. And people tend to be happier after they've biked. This year, it's really exciting. We have, that bike on the screen is one of three bikes that were donated by Rad Power Bikes into a sweepstakes. So everyone who registers will be automatically entered into that sweepstakes if they're eligible. So you can't be a Sandag employee or live with a Sandag employee, but most people will be eligible. And all you have to do is register on our website, which is sandag.org/bikeday. And there's over 100 pit stops all around the region, including one in San Marcos, which is super exciting. There will be a tune-up going on here, I think, courtesy of Trek San Marcos. And everyone who bikes to a pit stop while supplies last will receive one of these t-shirts and all kinds of other giveaways. So you have to register in advance, plan your route, check out the descriptions of each pit stop on our website. Last year, over 70% of people who participated in Bike Anywhere Day said they were more likely to keep riding. And so we wanted to find a way to help capture that momentum and continue it throughout the month. And we found that the business community was actually taking that initiative. And a lot of businesses, small businesses, were offering discounts to people who bike and promotions. If you show up on bike, you get a, you know, free donut or something. So we have a website forum where you can let us know what you're doing around the region and we'll help you spread the word. We'll put it on our website. And we'll send you an e-toolkit that looks like this so that you can, you can let people in your community know what those discounts look like. And just a few more slides for people who haven't biked in a while or are new to it or want a refresher because, you know, the road rules change every once in a while. In fact, they did change this year. We offer all kinds of education classes. You can take one online. You can register to host one and we'll help you put that on at your, at your small business or place of employment, schools even. And they're all completely free. And then last but not least, we have some resources to help you go by bike, including an online interactive bike map. And this is the most up-to-date way to see where the separated bikeways are, including five that are under construction right now. Sandag's building five bikeways around the region and two more are breaking ground this year. So it's good to keep aware of where those separated facilities are. And if you can't bike on Bike Anywhere Day, that's completely fine. You can share the love by sharing the road. And we do have a bike parking program with over 60 lockers. Most of them are near transit stations. So if you want to complete that first or last mile of your trip and leave your bike somewhere secure, all you have to do is register on our website, sandag.org/bikeparking, and you'll get a locker, a key for that locker. Thank you again for having me. If you have any questions, I'm happy to take them.
Thank you. I just wanted to, there's a tune-up station also at City Hall, is correct?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. I did have an issue one year when I got here, so they got me all tuned up. That was good. And then also, I'd like to, if you haven't seen it, just because it's about bikes, we have a really cool bike park at Bradley, our Bradley Park. It's one of the coolest bike parks you've ever seen. I actually, if you send me a message, I will, I'll go ahead and send you, there's a really cool video that I just received recently from one of our residents that shows in detail. It's got like a pump line, it's got, I'm sorry, a pump track and a jump line.
Oh, wonderful.
I think I said that right. Anyway, it's really cool. So we would love for you to check that out sometime.
Yes, we love those kind of facilities. We'll help spread the word and it makes it a lot easier to go by bike when you have that.
Thank you. Any other comments? No. All right. Thank you so much for coming. Okay. All right, moving on. Yes. Thank you. And I will see you Thursday morning. Okay, so moving on to our consent calendar. Are there any items that any council members wish to pull?
Move to approve tonight's consent calendar.
Second.
Okay. Oh, you know what? I actually do want to pull one item just to discuss housing. Yeah, okay. All right. So I, would you?
I'll withdraw in a second.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any notes? Seeing none? Okay. Just wanted to talk a little bit about housing, which is, you know, my least favorite topic when it comes to state mandates because anyone that's ever come to any of our meetings knows that I really have a, have an issue with all of the state control that has happened, taking away our local control. So I wanted to just go over a couple of things. If staff, is Michael, is, who's, oh, there he is.
Michael is coming on down in case you have very detailed questions. Otherwise, I have a high-level overview of number of laws signed in recent history and what the impact is.
Hundreds of bills have been passed that, that are taking away local control. So just wanted to explain, I guess, maybe just briefly, if there, when something is, follows state law, then it takes away our local control. And I mean, we talk about this an awful lot, but it just continues to keep happening. And there is one bill that just recently, I think, passed, or it's in the, in the process of passing, and that is the newest Scott Wiener bill that allows by right four to seven stories, I think it is. So maybe if you wanted to let us know where that is in the process, if we know?
Yes, I will hand that over to Michael. He's done a summary for us and he'll be able to give us an update.
Wonderful, thank you.
And as you know, Michael is our legislative analyst that has joined the city.
Joined us, yes. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor. So SB 79 is Scott Wiener's newest housing bill, and it is transit-oriented development. Council took an opposed position at its last meeting on the 22nd. And initially, we sent a letter on behalf of the mayor opposing this bill, and that is recorded. So it's in all the committee analyses. And there's another letter that is council-supported that will be going soon. So SB 79 would make it legal to build multifamily housing near transit in areas that are currently zoned for only single-family homes. And it would require upzoning within a quarter mile or a half mile from rail or bus stations. It would also give transit agencies that own property around these stations new land use authority, and it would be by right. So right now, it is in Senate appropriations. It is likely to be a very expensive bill, so it is kind of being held in appropriations, especially due to the budget right now. There is a lot of opposition on both sides. And in talking to our lobbyist consultant, there are a lot of requests for amendments. So we're not sure where it will go quite yet, but we will absolutely keep council apprised of the situation.
Okay. And when you're, when you say by right, just for the folks that are in the audience and also at home, by right means that the city has no jurisdiction over that to make a decision?
Correct.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Michael. I just wanted to have you fill us in a little bit because it is very frustrating for us as a local land use authority that we have our, have it taken honestly out of our hands and we don't like that. We like local control. So there are some things that are out there that could potentially fix this, like our neighborhood voices, which is bringing all land use back to local jurisdictions, which will give us greater accountability to our residents and that we can keep San Marcos and other cities the way that we'd like them, not the way that the state deems that they like our communities to be. So anyway, thank you, Michael, for the update. Appreciate it.
Mayor, if I may, I do want to add for the benefit of our residents that Michael and I did attend the League of California Cities 2025 City Leaders Summit. And this is one of the priorities of the league and also one of the bills that the city or the League of Cities is opposing. So it was part of the sort of ask of our legislatures to take that into consideration. So I just want to make sure our residents knows that we've been literally at the table and trying to make sure that our interests are taken into account.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. And at Sandag, we actually are going to be planning a trip to Sacramento, talking about also land use and then arena allocation as well, which is for the folks out in the audience, that is our regional housing needs assessment. The state comes up with a number and then they allocate it to our communities and we're supposed to be, well, they allocate it to Sandag and then Sandag allocates that out per city. And we're supposed to build that even though we don't actually build anything. That's all private development. So it's, it's a very difficult situation that we're put in. But anyway, I just wanted to mention that as well because of Sandag, we're going to be working on that too. Anyway, thank you very much. So I would move approval of item number four.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any notes? None. And oral communications. And I do believe that we may have a couple of speakers about the potential, well, the interfaith property, well, that they were talking about that had come up with the Methodist Church. And that funding was not granted by the state of California. So the Prop 1 funds are not going to be available. So that brings everything back to land use authority under the city of San Marcos. So I just wanted to mention that. And so anyway, we have a couple of speakers this evening. We have Dennis, we have Matthew Sembach, followed by Kristin Weaver. Dennis.
Good evening. Just a little bit over four weeks ago, through a newspaper article, we found that this particular project was in the works, that this proposal was in the works. We had to scramble and in the, about three weeks ago, we started an online petition. Now, that online petition now has almost 1,550 signatures. And the goal of the petition is to say, we like these kinds of facilities, you know, to, to help people who are drug addicts, addicted to alcohol, but not 100 feet from schools, playgrounds. It should be in a different area. So 1,550 people signed this petition in three weeks. And most of them, I can tell you, because I spoke to hundreds of people myself, most of them wanted to know how the city could be involved in this, how the city could even support this in any way. So, but without looking back, what I wanted to do is propose something, ask something of the mayor and the city council. I would like to request that there is a town hall meeting set up by the mayor and the city council where the residents of San Marcos can come and ask questions about how all this transpired. I know personally, I sent emails to every one of you asking you to sign our petition. Not that you weren't going to follow what the state said if this proposal was approved, but that you personally did not like the location of this particular facility. And, and while Mr. Sinella and Ms. LeBlanc actually responded to me, none of you even would sign the petition saying that you personally opposed it. So I'm asking you to please set up a town hall meeting where all of San Marcos, and I can tell you, this 1,550 number, that represents the people, maybe the 20% of the people who knew about this proposal because we had talked to them. Everybody I've talked to in the past week, none of them even knew about it. So it had not been disseminated. So... So that's my request to you, please schedule a town hall meeting, so that the citizens of San Marcos can find out what went on, and maybe we can work together to make sure this sort of thing doesn't happen again. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Matthew Sembok, followed by Kristen Weaver. And just to iterate, the project is not moving forward with Prop 1 funds, they were not granted, and so therefore, we will have land use authority on that property, that if no Prop 1 funds are used, so that's where it's at. They have not received that funding.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and fellow citizens. My name is Matthew Sembok, and I'm here to discuss the proposed detox facility 800 West Mission. My top three concerns with this proposal are the location, the unstoppable interactions, and the lack of transparency by the city council and all parties involved. Location, there are seven schools and facilities within .75 miles encompassing 2,100 children, and according to enrollment data that we have, that's what we get with. Four of them are under .15 miles, and one of them is on the property the facility is planned for. Unstoppable interactions, although not a walk-up facility, according to the interfaith, as stated in their KBPS interview, you can't stop people from walking up and seeking services, leaving the facility of their own free will, and lingering after being discharged. All these scenarios have the potential for a minor to interact with an addict and is irresponsible. Transparency, there's been a troubling lack of transparency, and the behind closed-door approach may meet the minimum requirements, but it betrays the trust of the people that you represent. Over 1,500 residents have spoken out about this in opposition. This is not just about zoning, it's about protecting children. I'm not sure what metrics or growth requirements the city is trying to meet, but the value of this project does not outweigh the risk of putting 2,100, 2,100 children at risk daily. We already have a serious issue in this area on Aberdeen with drugs, sex, and trash. I have addressed this with the principal at SMMS on multiple occasions. She has acted in good faith to correct these problems. Your decisions are also impacting children that visit from surrounding cities who use SMMS field after hours. Vista, Palway, Ramona, Escondido are just a few I have talked to at the field who are very concerned about the safety of our children after hours now. You have free will as a public official and a citizen. If you are not using your official resources, there is no law limiting you from signing a petition or writing letters. I suggest you host a town hall, as Dennis did, and answer the mail instead of hiding behind what Proposition 1 supposedly stripped you of. As a leader and a representative of the people, you need to reflect upon your role and stand against things that are wrong, even at the detriment of your own career or future aspirations. The day you stop giving, feel that you are powerless in your role, feel you can't do anything for the people, you should resign. Have no shame in it, we all hit that road at some point, as I told all my military leaders in my 26 years of service. The longer you stay, the more you hurt the community. Thank you for this opportunity, and I look forward to a town hall and/or a private meeting. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Matthew. Next up is Kristen Weaver.
Growing up, my mother read, me and my brother, many books. Mike Mulligan and His Steam Shovel. Mary Ann and him were told again and again that they could never accomplish shoveling a future town hall's basement in one day. Another book was about a small child who saves his brother from drowning, despite the adults not understanding as he cried out his message again and again. And a third was The Bike Lesson, as Papa Berenstein Bear makes mistakes again and again, teaching his son to ride a bike, including not knowing where the road is going, and eventually navigating off a cliff. I have learned that hard work, perseverance, and courage are virtues, especially in the face of opposition. They can even be lifesaving. A few weekends ago, I volunteered four hours at a North County detox facility. It was a beautiful experience where I saw hard work, perseverance, and courage, and it occurred to me while working there to ask myself and my friends, did one member of this city council sign the petition against a 150-bed facility 25 feet from a school and on the same property as a preschool? Did one member of this city council write, sign, and publish a letter stating their opposition to the location? No, and no. And furthermore, did the city manager do anything apart from proactively, without invitation or notification, approach a group of concerned parents outside this chamber minutes before the last city council meeting, all to explain why the council couldn't do anything? The answer to that is yes. Seems like an attempt to shut down parents from speaking out and defending children to this social studies teacher with 18 years' experience, and a clear follow-up political comment from the days that further dismissed their concerns. Over 1,500 people signed that petition in three weeks. Your constituents crying out like Chang, trying to save his brother, tiki tiki tembo, and we will cry out again and again, because this is what is best for children, and the location will off the table for now, and we acknowledge that, because of these people behind me? That location is anything but that. And at that detox facility a few weeks ago, just a week, 10 days, I met the mayor of Vista, John Franklin, who saw what a community can do with hundreds of volunteers to help its struggling population in a safe location for both addicts and children. That is leadership, that is compassion, that is common sense. The interfaith project may not have received funding this round, but not one of you demonstrated leadership. You chose to blame the state and smile like Henry B. Swop did to Mike Mulligan and Mary Ann, and dismissed us. And the people behind me, they did this. They deserve your thanks, they deserved an unabashed apology for not leading personally or professionally.
Thank you, Kristen. Okay, moving on to new business, item number eight, amending the issuance of tax allocation refunding bonds pursuant to a second supplemental indenture, approving preliminary and final official documents, statements, and providing for other matters relating thereto resolution SA 2025-036. Do we have a presentation this evening?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and council members. This item is a continuation of the new business item from March 11, 2025, when the successor agency approved resolution number SA 2025-035 for the issuance of bonds to refinance the previously issued 84.7 million tax allocation refunding bonds, series 2015A. On April 2017, 2025, the county oversight board also approved the issuance of the bonds, and that same day, the successor agency and oversight board resolutions, along with other required financing documents, were submitted to the California State Department of Finance for review, and DOF approval is estimated for May 23rd. Revised good faith estimates prepared by the city's municipal advisor as of April 11, 2025, shows that the estimated total debt service payment savings is about 7.8 million, with an interest cost estimated at 3.68%. With about 5.1 million in funds already distributed to the successor agency, it would result in a net increase of approximately 2.7 million in future redevelopment property tax trust fund residual distribution to impacted tax entities. But exact savings will be determined at the time of the bond issue. And that, in the current market conditions, we are still within the parameter set forth in Health and Safety Code, Section 34177 dot 5A1. The resolution before council tonight amends resolution number SA 2025-035 to increase the not-to-exceed principal amount of the refunding bonds to 48 million, and revises the net present value savings to the successor agency as a result of the refunding shall not be less than 3%. The approval of the resolution would also approve the form of an authorized execution of the preliminary and final official statements and the continuing disclosure certificate and confirm the issuance of the bonds. This concludes the presentation, happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of staff? Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any no's? Seeing none. Thank you very much, Donna. Moving on to public hearings, next up is Resolution 2025-9434 and 2025-9435, approval of the Community Development Block Grant 2025-2029 Consolidated Plan and the 2025-26 Annual Action Plan. Okay, moving to a presentation, are y'all ready? Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Sylvia Solis Daniels, Housing and Neighborhood Services Director. Joining me tonight is Quentin Hufford, Senior Analyst, who will present the public hearing for the Community Development Block Grant Consolidated Plan and Fiscal Year 2025 through 2029 Annual Action Plan for Fiscal Year 2025 through 2026.
Thank you, Mayor, council members, and Sylvia, for this opportunity. The U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD, annually provides funding to eligible jurisdictions through the Federal Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG, Entitlement Program. Funds must be used for eligible projects and programs that benefit low and moderate-income individuals and households in the city of San Marcos that are consistent with the national objectives and the city's approved consolidated plan, or CONPLAN for short. To ensure the plan reflects local priorities, city staff conducted a community needs assessment from September through November 2024. This outreach effort included public surveys, stakeholder meetings, and consultations with service providers to gather input on current challenges and gaps in services or infrastructure. The information collected was used to develop the draft goals and funding strategies included in the consolidated plan and the annual action plan. The consolidated plan and annual action plan are required by HUD to receive grant of funding. To receive these funds, the city must adopt a five-year CONPLAN identifying community needs and program goals. Our current CONPLAN, approved in 2020, expires June 30th of 2025. The proposed 2025 to 2029 Consolidated Plan outlines strategic goals to guide CDBG investments over the next five years, beginning July 1, 2025, through June 30, 2030, which include public services, program administration, affordable housing, and public infrastructure and capital improvement projects. The accompanying 25 to 26 Annual Plan identifies the specific programs and activities that will be funded in the upcoming program year to address identified community needs. The city anticipates an award of $662,806 based on the prior year allocation, as HUD or the Department of Housing and Urban Development has not yet released the 25 to 26 allocations. An additional $2,11,656 in available funds from previous years brings the total estimated available funding to $2,674,462. Allocations will be adjusted based on the total percentage of the final award amount. The 2025 to 2029 CONPLAN and 25 to 26 AAP, which included substantial amendment to prior year funds, was published on the city's website on April 14, 2025, for a 30-day public review and comment period. The substantial amendment to available prior year funds from 2018 to 2023 will ensure the oldest funds are used first for eligible capital improvement projects. The public comment period will close at the end of tonight's public hearing. CDBG program can utilize funds through the following activities. A program administration, which can utilize up to 20% of the annual CDBG allocation. Staff recommend allocating $132,561 to administration and fair housing, education, and outreach. The second is public service programs, which can utilize a maximum of 15% of the annual CDBG allocation to fund nonprofit and social service providers to serve low and moderate-income clientele. Staff recommends funding six public service providers focused on Latinx victim advocacy services, senior nutrition, rental assistance for low-income seniors, homeless prevention and rental assistance, youth and family wraparound services, and domestic violence support programs, for a total of $99,000. Lastly, the public infrastructure and community facilities, also known as capital improvement in the annual action plan, are not limited to a maximum allocation, but can include infrastructure improvements and cannot include maintenance and repair of public facilities. The 2025-2026 AAP estimates $431,245 in new funding for allocation to capital improvement HUD is finalizing their monitoring of program years 2020 to 2021 and 2021 to 2022, and requires the city to refund $1,490,811.83 into CDBG eligible capital projects over the next three years using non-federal sources. Beginning July 2025, the first of three payments of $496,937 will be reimbursed to the city's CDBG line of credit to allocate to eligible activities. The reimbursement will fund older program years, which are in threat of expiring. A substantial amendment is required to utilize expiring older program funding first, and substantially amend prior year funds from program years 2018 to 19, 2019 to 20, 2020 to 21, 2021 to 22, and 2022 to 23. Reimbursed funds will be reallocated into eligible capital projects. Following the public hearing, staff will finalize the 2025 to 2029 Consolidated Plan and 2025 to 2026 Annual Action Plan, along with substantial amendment to prior year funds, and prepare for submission to HUD once the entitlement allocation is announced and modifications are completed. Once approved by HUD, CDBG will be, funding will be made available through a reimbursable grant starting July 1, 2025. This concludes our presentation, we're available to answer additional questions.
Thank you, Quentin. Any questions of staff? Nope. Okay, this, we have three speakers. We have Richard Radash, and then from the Community Resource Center, then we have Mabi Castro from Lifeline, and then Bobby Case from Legal Aid, in that order. Richard, come on down. Welcome.
Mayor Jones, council members, city staff, and audience, good evening. I'm Richard Radash, I'm the Grants and Contracts Manager of Community Resource Center, speaking in support of the CDBG allocation plan for the coming year. I want to highlight CRC's community impact in San Marcos. First, we just remodeled and reopened our San Marcos resale store at 210 South Rancho Santa Fe Road. Our resale store is a hub for community engagement. San Marcos residents and others donate clothing, accessories, home decor, and home goods. All can shop, and their purchases make a difference in the lives of those in need, raising money for CRC services. CRC clients often receive resale store vouchers to meet their needs for clothing and home goods, helping them to keep their housing. Next, I want to share a success story from our Latino Advocacy Services. The client's name is Chang, to protect her privacy. Emily, a 26-year-old, single mother of three, was referred to Latino Advocacy Services by her care coordinator at One Safe Place. She had experienced domestic violence, but was very proactive in her case management plan with her victim advocate. Two of her children have special needs requiring therapy and special care. Her other child was diagnosed with cancer and was unable to walk because of how tired his body was from chemotherapy. Emily, needless to say, was stressed, had no family support, and limited resources. She was unable to seek employment, and she had to care for her children. Following discussion with her victim advocate about her legal problems, she was referred to the San Diego Volunteer Lawyers Program for representation to get a temporary restraining order against her abuser. She and her victim advocate worked closely on her housing plan and referred her to CRC's Domestic Violence Rapid Rehousing Program. She was successfully placed in a safe home, and CRC was able to assist with nine months of rental assistance and supportive services. The San Diego County District Attorney's Office donated a wheelchair for her ill child during the holiday season that The family attended CRC's Holiday Baskets Event, which gave them a free shopping experience at Target. She received transportation assistance that allowed her to take her children to school, therapy, and medical appointments. And she told us that she was very grateful for the assistance that she received from us. Thank you for supporting CRC through the CDBG program.
Thank you, Richard. Next up is Mabi Castro from Lifeline. And then that'll be Bobby Case next, and then after that, Yuri Esperanza from Interfaith.
Hi there, good evening, Mayor Jones and Council. Thank you, my name is Mabi Castro. I'm the Chief Impact Officer for Lifeline Community Services. I'm here to speak in support of this item, and thank you and the -- thank you and the council for investing in Lifeline and the work that we're doing. Lifeline has been a driving force for change in San Diego County, and our staff is dedicated to empowering youth, adults, and families to live prosperous, enriching lives and break cycles of poverty, violence, and systemic barriers. We serve about 25,000 individuals annually, and the CDBG funding will allow us to provide flexible wraparound support to multiple families participating in Lifeline's youth development programs. Many of these families face housing instability, unemployment, transportation barriers, and financial insecurity, placing youth at risk of homelessness, school disengagement, and deeper justice system involvement. This funding will fill those gaps by providing assistance for housing, transportation, and other essential needs, ensuring families receive target, individualized support to stay on track. So just want to say thank you again, Mayor Jones and councilmembers, for your support to keep Lifeline's mission strong. Thanks.
Thank you. Next up is Bobby Case, followed by Yuri Esperanza. Actually, I might have Yuri's last name wrong. No, Esperanza.
All right, good evening, Madam Mayor, Honorable Councilmembers, and my fellow San Marcos neighbors. My name is Bobby Case. I'm the Supervising Attorney with the Legal Aid Society of San Diego's Fair Housing Center. On behalf of the Legal Aid Society of San Diego, I want to thank you for your consideration of our proposal to continue the fair housing work that we do in the Valley of Discovery. And also, I want to thank you for recently recognizing us with the proclamation during Fair Housing Month. Those proclamations take center stage in our office right across the street, so. Legal Aid's Fair Housing Center currently serves San Marcos residents through a broad array of services aimed at upholding and enforcing the Fair Housing Act. These services range from brief counsel and advice on fair housing matters, all the way to representation of tenants in negotiation with landlords, all the way to full-scope representation in administrative complaints and affirmative litigation in federal and state court. Additionally, our Fair Housing Team provides outreach and trainings to housing providers in San Marcos tenants alike on the protections and duties of federal and state fair housing laws. As a matter of fact, I believe we did a training here for some senior citizens last month in regards to mobile home tenancies. So as a San Marcos resident myself, I take great pride in the work that we do with you, with San Marcos community stakeholders, nonprofits, and other local agencies. With the funds from this grant, Legal Aid will be able to offer monthly fair housing presentations, a total of 12, conduct fair housing audit tests, publish social media and website materials, FAQs, disseminating at least 200, 300 housing brochures, and to continue to serve the city of San Marcos residents. I think to date, we're close to serving 100 of your residents and constituents. And last but not least, we screen housing-related calls for assistance and fair housing issues. Again, the -- I believe the work that we do is crucial, especially in a growing city like this. And for those reasons, we appreciate your consideration of our grant proposal, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Do you have any questions? Okay, no. No questions, thank you so much. Yuri, it might be Espinoza. I'm sorry, I can't read your writing. My apologies, I even put my glasses on. From Interfaith, it's great to see you.
Thank you. My name is Yurias Alastian. I represent Interfaith Community Services, and I'm just here to thank you for considering the CDBG project. We had the privilege back in 2020 to work with the City of San Marcos. They granted us CDBG CV funding, which was for COVID homelessness dollars. I'm really excited to be able to speak on behalf of the Interfaith Community Services team. And I feel that with this CDBG funding, we're going to be able to help more people in the San Marcos community. So what we did back in 2020 when we helped out, it was a similar project where we helped out people with the one-time assistance to prevent them from experiencing homelessness. We did a six-month and 12-month follow-up after closure, after we closed them out from our caseload. And most of them were still housed, so I think this is going to really help them out because most of them just need a one-time assistance, and that's all they need. And this is a great project to be able to support the -- to continue to support the San Marcos community to maintain housing and prevent homelessness, in addition to also offering wraparound services, other services that Interfaith Community Services provides. So yeah, I'm just here to, you know, thank you all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any other discussion or questions? This is a public hearing. So do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any notes? Seeing none, any further discussion on the item? No? Move to approval?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any notes? Okay, seeing none. Motion passes, thank you very much, Quentin and Sylvia. Next up is ordinances. Ordinance 2025-1559, Adoption of Local Responsibility Area Fire Hazard Severity Zone Map. And there we have Kenneth and our chief, Baron.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Dan Baron, Fire Chief for the City of San Marcos. And I am joined tonight with our Deputy Fire Marshal, Kenneth Kim, who's going to introduce our first reading ordinance approving the local responsibility area of fire hazard severity zone maps.
All right, good evening, everybody. So my name is Kenneth Kim, and one of my main responsibilities is the wildfire mitigation program. So you might have known the California Office of the State Fire Marshal is updating fire hazard severity zone maps to reflect the latest wildfire science, assessing physical characteristics such as vegetation, slope, and wind patterns to classify lands within state and local responsible areas. This is SRA and LRA as moderate, high, or very high hazard zones. These hazard-based classifications, which differ from risk assessments by assuming known mitigation efforts, are essential for enforcing defensible space regulations, applying Wildland Urban Interface Building Codes, and informing real estate disclosures and guiding local planning. The updated SRA maps became effective on April 1st, 2024, and identified LRA maps, including those for the City of San Marcos, were released on March 24th, 2025. The city is required to adopt these designations, but is not proposing any additions to the identified local fire hazard severity zones. While the adoption carries no direct fiscal impact, it may lead to future costs related to public education, planning reviews, and infrastructure adjustments. This action is not subject to environmental review under SEQA. That is it. So if you have any questions, comments?
So what does that mean to the folks at home? I guess just to break it down for our residents, because we're not in charge of this. This is something that we must adopt. Again, not a local control, we just have to go with it.
Sure.
So what does that mean?
Yeah, so basically, CAL FIRE, which is the state Fire Department, they came up with a modern method of identifying fire hazard severity zones. The last map was updated in 2009. So as you know, there's a lot of development and just changes. So they came up with these maps, and basically, they told the locals or the cities saying you have to adopt these maps. You are not allowed to make decreases in the fire hazard severity zones. But if you want, you can increase the fire hazard severity zones. So right now, most of all cities, all the fire departments, they're not really touching the maps. They're just adopting it and accepting them as is. And you can find the maps on our website as well as CAL FIRE's website. And they have a really cool interface where you can see the before and afters. We're not going to be doing anything different. We've already had local very high fire hazard severity zones in our local area. It's just, it's going to be affecting more of our city due to these new modeling techniques. So nothing different, just a little bit more of what we already do.
So quick question. When folks at home, maybe they were not in a higher high fire severity zone, how will this impact them, do we think?
So folks, if you are not in a fire hazard and you become in a fire hazard severity zone, then defensible space guidelines will now impact you. So for example, the 100-foot defensible space where you want it lean, clean, and green. Also, if you do like a major tenant improvement where you modify the exterior of your house, then you have fire-resistant building codes. So Chapter 7A in the Building Code would apply. So if you do your -- if you apply for a permit and you have a plan review, you're going to be required to do, put in fire-resistant construction. It shouldn't affect insurance. In fact, the Department of Insurance says that these maps, the insurance companies are not allowed to use these maps for that, so that's not a concern. Other than that, that's pretty much it.
Great, thank you, Kenneth. Any other questions from the council? Councilmembers?
Not a question, but thank you for the report, Kenneth and Dan. And I also wanted to thank the entire department for last week for an incredible and impressive effort on the wildfire preparedness drill that was led by our very own San Marcos Fire. That was -- I got a chance to go out there for the Media Day, and it was extraordinarily impressive. And I know there's a lot of hard work and effort that was put into that, so I wanted to say thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Nunez, did you have something?
I just want to make sure that we include a public comment that we received prior to the meeting. I'm not sure if we're going to go into public comment, if we received any other public comment speakers for this item?
I don't think we have any speaker slips, Councilmember.
Then I'll go ahead and put the public comment on the record. The public comment is from Arcela Nunez, co-founder and co-director of Universidad Popular. And it says, "Thank you for making public the local responsibility area fire hazard severity zone map as presented in the ordinance number 2025-1559. Our team at Universidad Popular is part of the statewide Listos California campaign helping to increase community emergency preparedness, particularly among elders and non-English-speaking communities. It is extremely important that everyone in our city learn about the updated maps, designated lands as moderate, high, or very high fire hazard severity zones, incorporating the latest fire science, localized climate data, and improved fire modeling techniques. We look forward to collaborating with the city to share this information with the public."
All right, thank you, Councilmember. One quick question, it just occurred to me. Do we have a link from our homepage, our website, to the fire severity map? Okay.
We have it, yeah. We have it on the website.
Yeah, I thought we did. I just wanted to double-check. Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? If not, do I have a motion to introduce?
Motion to introduce.
All second? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any notes? Seeing none. Okay, moving on to oral communications. No further oral communications. Reports. Send it. Our biggest discussion was the budget at $1.3 billion. It did pass. We are adding a couple of new positions, one of them being the Director of Internal Controls. I think I brought that up a little bit earlier at a previous meeting. And we do have, I do have some good news because we have some experience on that. That interview panel, our own Michelle Bender is going to be on that interview panel. That is the Director of Internal Controls, so excited to have that. I think they wanted your experience in that interview panel. So anyway, $1.3 billion, and the director did have a lot of discussion about that he felt that there could potentially be mid-year budget changes. And then there were several members of the comments from the public asking that we defund and reallocate funds for studies on road projects, including an evacuation of the Highway 67 study 67 study that's going to be moving forward, that's in the process. That is not something that I will personally support, due to the fact that these are long ongoing projects. But there is a push from some of the folks in the public, they want to reallocate those funds to public transit for today. But as we know here in the city, planning is a really important part of our job, and being able to move forward with longstanding projects that we've had moving along for several years, you don't just stop spending the money on them, especially when there are projects that were promised to our voters during transnet. So again, that's not something that I will be supporting, but it has not been put on the agenda by any of the board members so far, but I think there is a push for that. So anyway, I just wanted to bring that up. And then we have League of California Cities, Councilmember Musgrove.
Thank you, Mayor. We met yesterday. We had a little, kind of a debrief for the most recent CAL City Summit with our current president, Councilmember Nunez, and other members who are in different subcommittees. That was up in Sacramento, but a consistent theme from everybody was that all elected officials in the area need to get involved, so pay attention to the ledge updates, and much as we did with SB 79, which maybe the community doesn't know, we did sign a letter in opposition to that. So we do pay attention. We get good information from Michael, and we will continue to do that. We had representatives from San Diego State. They have an academy for local elected officials, they do that every year. The session starts May 15th, and it is open to any of the elected officials in the county. And the primary presentation we had was food insecurity in San Diego County impacts and resources for cities. And the representatives were from San Diego Hunger Coalition, Feeding San Diego, and the Jacob and Cushman San Diego Food Bank. And on Friday, which is a significant day, we'll get to that later, Mayor smiling, elected officials were invited to take a tour of the Tijuana River Valley to see firsthand the threats to our community from the effluent coming up from the riverbed. And that concludes my report.
One thing I did wanna mention, councilmember, is I have spoken to both our state senator, well, actually, three, three folks that, our state senator, which is Brian Jones, I've spoken to Darshana Patel, as well as Carl DeMayo. I reached out to all three of them and said, "I don't know who wants to carry this, but I would love someone to carry legislation, whether it be in a current bill, or it could be a standalone, but we need some relief on local control." So what my proposal was, when it comes to affordable housing, we are, we have a lot of it here in the City of San Marcos, over 11, or right around 11% of our total housing is deed-restricted affordable. And I said, "You know what would be great? If we had a pass on any mandated project that is increasing density by right." And so I said, "Hey, what if there was a provision somewhere that would be anything over 8%? If you have 8% deed-restrict affordable in your city, that you would not have to accept, that you could deny a project that is using density bonus that takes you out of the local control part of it?" Talk about this all the time. I don't know if it'll go anywhere, but it would be great if multiple members of the council would bring up things like this, being that I'm not on League of California Cities, but Councilmember Nunez, and then also Councilmember Musgrove. Just a thought, but I think, you know, if we're following, and by the way, we're like, our cities around us, the City of Escondido is right over 2% deed-restricted affordable, City of Vista, less than 2%, and the City of Oceanside, less than 1%. And then you go over to Carlsbad, and they're at about 6%. You know, we will be updating those numbers, but that's where we're at right now, and it seems to me that we should not have a project that is, gets a density bonus, because we, you know, the state is trying to build more housing. Again, we don't build the housing, but it sure would be great for us to have local control. So anyway, that would be my, my dream come true, actually.
It sounds like then set, not an arbitrary number, but one I think you could easily calculate out, and that would be the threshold. And if you were at or above, then we assign the density bonuses to those other communities where they really need to have their numbers come up.
Yes. It seems to me something along those lines would be acceptable, because here's the thing, when you've done the right thing, you should not be penalized and, you know, have a density bonus project that is something that will really affect the community in a detrimental way. But it continues to happen, and you know, you know, we can have folks all day long say, "Well, you need to do something, you need to do this, you need to do that," when we literally have our hands tied. It's very frustrating. I know each one of us feels this pretty intensely, and you know, we've got several right now that are just not good projects that we would like to do something about, but we have to stay in our lane because we don't have control over it. So it'd be nice to have control back.
I think we can work with Cat on that.
Absolutely. I think we have sufficient representation in our area that we can have that be one of the priorities for the League.
And I feel like 8% is something that some of the cities are working for, and it might be advisable that we could do something along those lines. All right?
Before we move on, Mayor, I do wanna announce two things. So thank you, Councilmember Musgrove, for mentioning the tour that we have scheduled on Friday. We do still have availability, we have capacity, so if anybody is interested, available to join us for that, we do have space for that. And then I also wanna do a plug, since we did have the presentations by the Food Bank and Feeding San Diego, and they really are expecting to be severely impacted by the cuts that we're seeing from the federal level and from the state and county. And so one of the things that Feeding San Diego mentioned to me is that the, one of the costly items that they purchase is tuna, the canned tuna that we see in a lot of the distributions. So they're looking for somebody that has a connection to one of the suppliers, they would really welcome that. We have very generous donors in our city and our community, so if, should anybody know, have a contact with the tuna canned supplier, they would really welcome that.
I think Bumblebee is still headquartered here. They don't have a fleet here, but they still have their business office.
Yeah.
I think they're on La Jolla.
I'm not sure, but they did mention that, so I figure I would announce it in case somebody in our audience and at home is listening to us.
You know, another thought, too, is if they reached out to the grocery stores, I'm not sure what they do with the soon-expiring cans of tuna. I'm wondering if that would be a possibility for them to reach out, you know, to like Vons, Albertsons, Ralphs, and all of that, to see if that's a possibility as well.
I can clarify, they are involved in the, in the food recapturing.
Yeah.
Right? That's part of their, their mission, and so, but I'll clarify with that. So thank you for those suggestions.
All right. Anything else on that? Nope? Okay, North County Transit District, Deputy Mayor, Sanella.
Yes, we meet on Thursday.
Okay. North County Dispatch Joint Powers Authority?
We meet in a couple weeks.
Okay. Clean Energy Alliance, Councilmember Nunez.
Deputy Mayor Sanella attended our last meeting on my behalf.
I did, and I apologize, I forgot that I attended that meeting.
Say what?
So I don't, I don't have a prepared notes on that, but I will bring them to the next meeting.
Okay, no problem.
Thank you for...
But I did attend, and it was a productive meeting, I can assure you.
Yeah, thank you for, thank you for attending on my behalf.
Okay. City Council Business Visits. We had one. Councilmember Musgrove and I went to Dos Desperados. There we are. That was, they're really cool over there. I've never been there before, for some reason. Well, I'm not a beer drinker, but they had their 11th anniversary, more than a decade, and owner Steve was there. He was a hobby home brewer who left his life at retirement and thought, "Hmm, I'll open a beer business." He was brewing in his garage, and he decided, "You know what? Let's, let's go ahead." And he got with his business partner, his wife, and they said, "Let's, let's start a business." So they did that during the pandemic, or they did that before the pandemic, and then during the pandemic, they were able to receive one of the small business loans, which became a grant, which helped provide essential support to sustain their operations during a very challenges, challenging time. And you know, a really cool thing that I love about the brewing industry is they really mentor one another, and a lot of times, the brewers will move on to start their own brewing business, which is really cool. So they get their, you know, their experience, they learn all about the business, and then they go out a lot of times on their own. So that's something that I think started with Stone Brewing, which started here in San Marcos. And they, and honestly, the whole industry has really kept, you know, to that, that thought process and that way of doing business. Anyway, do you wanna talk about that?
Steve talked a little bit about expansion and what they could and couldn't do. I think he's very comfortable with the model he has right now for employees, I think is what he said. Two or three of them right there, that's their brew room, it's, my gosh, you could put 10 of them in this room this size, but they have just enough capacity. They had two 300-gallon tanks, and then two 600s. And then they have their own milling machine where they do the hops and the grains, and they, he has, he has recipes, but he kinda does it based on gut instinct, temperature, humidity, time of year, analyzing the base product. They're expanding out into different seltzers, and that's kinda helped quite a bit. And one of the photos we saw a moment ago, we were all standing behind the bar, making sure we didn't touch anything that was gonna be used for consumption, but you could see mugs on the, on the wall, and there was an adjacent wall, you can see them kinda behind us, are the glass mugs, where the, the photos being taken, that wall back there, are club members. So they have a club, and you can join, and you get 20% off on discounts, or rather, 20% discount on merchandise items, hats, shirts, a lot of different things. You get a custom engraved glass mug, and they have specials all the time. And we were there early afternoon, 3-ish, and they were just opening up, setting up for the afternoon and evening, and I thought, "Boy, there's nobody here," but within 10 minutes, people were coming in. They were coming to the bar, and everybody knows everyone else. I mean, it's not quite like Cheers, but it's probably as close as you're gonna get, because Steve has established a clientele, loyal customers. He knows some of our staff, because this brewing community is fairly small, and everybody knows everyone else. And one of the questions was asked, "Are you, are you ever concerned that some of your secrets will go out and be used for someone else to turn profit?" And that's the highest form of flattery for them, because it'll never be exactly the same, but fantastic, go out there and do it. Get people interested, and they'll come back to my place. It was a great visit. I've been there before, picked up growlers, they're very good, very nice people.
And they're making the, the, the different drinks now. It's not just all beer, it's the seltzers.
The seltzers, right, different fruit flavors.
Yeah, that was pretty cool. So they said they used to buy the fruit just like at the store, and then they realized it wasn't always the same, it depended on the sugar content, on how ripe it was, and all that. So they actually found the supplier that does supply it now, so it's definitely the same pretty much every time.
Consistency.
Yeah, definitely. And they were also, like, it's, it's pretty cool their setup. They have all these pipes in the walls and everything, and it goes from one side to the other, it goes from the more beautiful polished sort of displays, and then the other side, it's not that they're not beautiful and polished, but they look a little different. Anyway, and then, and they do all of their own, is it roasting? Tess would know this, is it roasting of the hops? Maybe I have that wrong. I forget what it's called.
They bring it up...
What is it? What's it called? I can't remember the...
They bring it up to a certain temperature, because you don't wanna destroy the flavor.
It's not roasting. That's my word, roasting. They're probably all laughing at me right now, but, but I forget what they called it. I don't, I'm not seeing it here in the notes, but they do, they do like heat them up and everything, and then, then they do like a boiling process that gets the, kind of steeps it like tea. I don't remember the name of that either, the technical term, but...
The wort?
The what?
Wort.
Is that what it's called?
It's a German word, W R T.
Okay, well, I'm glad you heard that and remembered it. It was, it was quite a, quite a beautiful visit, and they have a really nice location, it's really pretty. And the best part is they're like, they brought up something that I didn't even know about. Live, they want live music, and I was like, "Hmm, that sounds like fun. I think we need to bring the fun factor here in San Marcos. Got all these amazing places, why not bring the fun factor?" So we're gonna move forward on that.
It's a very good location.
Yeah. No houses around, they could have some fun.
Los Poses, and where it intersects with Linda Vista Drive on the southeast corner.
You can almost always see their little pop-up outside. Hazy Daisy was not the name of the, the beer that you bought. What was it? The palomino?
Yes, it was a...
What was it?
A Pilsner, which I favored when I lived in Germany. I got used to the Pilsner.
Palomino something or other.
They have a new one, though, and it's an extra pale ale, because they're finding that, as you know, some of the, what's it, Michelob Ultra, and the very light beers are very popular. People don't want the heaviness of beer so much anymore, so they've developed an extra pale ale, which I didn't have one.
Yeah, XPA.
The XPA, and they're featuring that right now, and it's a, it's very popular.
And yeah, they like to help incubate the brewing talent, which we already talked about. So, okay.
Tess, did we do all right on that? Okay.
Well, she was just kind of laughing at the one part when I said roasting the hops. I don't know what it, actually, it wasn't roasting it, it was, they break it up, they're like milling it almost, or something like that. They do it all in-house. Oh, I saw that look.
No.
Okay, I don't know the technical term, but I know what I'm thinking.
They had all the grains that they're going to use for the different styles.
And they buy that locally, North County.
And they run them through their own mill right there, and then set them right into the tanks.
It looked like they were gonna make bread or something like that. Anyway, it was an interesting visit. They've been, you know, again, 11 years. Okay, council commentary. I just wanted to say, you know, you kind of mentioned this a little bit earlier, but great job to our fire department on hosting this year, the countywide fire drill. You know, not every fire department in the state actually, or fire agencies that are within close proximity in the same area, many of them don't even have a lot of collaboration, which is where you see issues happening. I remember when I first joined the city council, we didn't even have Boundary Drop, which has been something that has really improved our response times, and then also, you know, when we have major events. The other thing that we also do that maybe folks at home don't know, and that is that we have strike teams throughout the county. And so if a fire erupts, there are, there are strike teams that can get to it pretty quickly. Those are multi-agencies, again, you know, working together, collaborating, which is how we are going to do our best to keep people safe. Will there be another incident, a fire incident? I think pretty surely there will, but definitely when we're working together, we're better, much better, stronger together. So things like that happened last week with us working together and having those sorts of training exercises are really, really vital and important. And we're really happy that our, our community was able to deal with it, because I know it, it can be a little disruptive, but again, in the end, it really is helpful for us, providing the best quality service to the whole entire county. So anyway, thank you, everyone, for your patience and how that went, because I think I heard it went very well, so. Any other discussion?
I have one, I think.
Yes, councilmember.
Can I, real quickly?
Yeah, go ahead.
Hopefully, you're not going down to the Tijuana River Valley on Friday to celebrate your birthday.
I'm definitely not.
Okay, so the mayor's birthday is this Friday.
Oh, thanks.
Happy birthday.
Oh, thanks. Well, thanks there, councilmember. Yes, Councilmember LeBlanc.
You beat me to it.
Oh, gosh, you guys, come on!
But I also just wanted to give a quick shout-out to our Parks and Rec Department and the watershed program, and everybody who volunteered this past Saturday for the summer splash bash and the bags and brews. On a very hot Saturday, they pulled off two events that were basically at the same time, and we stopped by both of those, my kids had a blast, and everyone did a great job with that. They were really successful events, I think, especially in light of the heat. So thank you to everyone, and also happy birthday to our mayor this Friday.
Thank you. All right, with that, this meeting's adjourned.